Welcome to this week's meeting of the Rockland Board of Selectmen coming to you live on WRPS from the H. Bernard Monahan Memorial Room here at Rockland Town Hall. On the agenda this week, we've got the special election warrant, appointments, and FEMA reimbursements. Now here's the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Ed Kimball.
Good evening, welcome to tonight's meeting. Would you all please rise and join us for a pledge of allegiance? Mr. Ryan, would you like to lead us? Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I apologize, I should have had Eagle Scout to it, I didn't realize he was in the corner there. The audience and participants and general public should be aware that any and all portions of this open meeting may be recorded by audio and video resources. All of some of this meeting may be rebroadcast periodically by WRPS or other outlets. Persons wanting a DVD copy of this meeting should contact WRPS or the Board of Selectmen's office, a small fee will be charged. With that, we have open forum. We have Eagle Scout, Timothy Laterno, presentation. Larry?
Tim, why don't we go up front to the podium here? Excuse me.
Does Allen want to read?
Yes.
Larry left his copy up here.
Well, he's a reader.
Alright.
I was gonna ask him what you did. Actually, tell the people what you did to get this award.
Okay. So, there's a community building in Abington. It's mainly used for scouts and after-school, like, teaching if you need extra help. The basement was completely, like, covered in trash and stuff. So what I did was I cleaned out all the trash, repainted it, just renovated it, and yeah, that's it.
There you go.
The town of Rockland puts out quite a fair share of Eagle Scouts, and that's a testament to the leadership of the people that run these troops and organizations throughout the town. And for a young man to come this far in scouting and to do and accomplish what he's done is really a testament to his family, to his own dedication, and to the people all around him. So, Tim, in recognition for all the commitment and dedication as an Eagle Scout to the town of Rockland, Massachusetts, May 17, 2006, signed by the Board and the Town Administrator, congratulations. It'll take you a long way.
Tim lives here on Central Street in Rockland, and what he did, he had raised money for his project selling candy bars, and they, as it says, cleaned, cleared, and repaired and renovated a public building in Abington. He started as a Tiger Cub Scout when he was six years old and wanted to give back to the place where he started his journey into scouting. So, we've been waiting a year for you, Tim. How is college going?
Oh, it's challenging, but...
We've been trying to get Tim to get in here. He actually earned his Eagle Scout, his review was in 2015, but he's been away at the University of Massachusetts in Dartmouth, pursuing a civil engineering degree. We all wish you future good fortune.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, next up on the agenda, we have minutes...
Tim, you'll be here for a long time.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda, item number two, open session minutes of May 2, 2016.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a vote. Next up, we have open session minutes of May 3, item number three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a vote. Unfinished business, item number four, your special election warrant ballot. Mr. Chaka?
The Board voted at the last meeting to establish June 11th as the special town election to support the two articles that were passed at town meeting, and we have to read into the record the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Town of Rockland Warrant Special Town Election. To one and all constables of the town of Rockland, County of Plymouth, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directly to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections to vote at precincts 1, 2, 3, and 4, the Rogers Williams, the John W. Rogers Middle School Gymnasium, 100 Taunton Ave., and precincts 5 and 6, the R. Stewart Esten School Gymnasium, 733 Summer Street. On Saturday, the 11th day of June 2016, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., to cast their votes in a special town election for the following questions, which are exempt from Proposition 2 and 1/2. Ballot question number one, a road project debt exclusion. Shall the town of Rockland be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for bond issued in order to continue construction and perform the additional road repair, reconstruction, maintenance, including road drainage systems, curving, signs, pavement marking, shoulder improvements, and related structures on the public ways listed below? Arthur Street, Azalea Way, Bostow Lane, Bay Path Lane, Bigelow Ave., Birch Bottom Circle, Carey Street, Central Ave., Christine Ave., Cliff Street, Cornet Stetson Drive, Daniel Teague Drive, Deacon Reed Lane, Del Preet Ave., Colonel Brian Duffy Way, Earl Street, Exchange Street, Forest Street, Franklin Hunt Road, George Street, Glenn Street, Indian Head Lane, Jacob Lovell Lane, Lavina Ave., Magnolia Drive, Millbrook Drive, Morningside Drive, Myrtle Street, Nob Scott Brook Lane, Pond Street, Reed Bent Road, Setucket Road, Split Boulder Road, Stanley Ave., Summit Street, Tansey Lane, Union Street, Wall Street, Ward Street, Warren Ave., and Wilks Circle. And yes or no? Ballot question two, the athletic complex debt exclusion. Shall the town of Rockland be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for bond issued in order to pay for the cost of designing and constructing? An athletic complex consisting of turf playing field with 800-seat grandstand, press box, and surrounding eight-lane track, including removal of the old track at Reed Street, the building of two new softball fields, and a multi-use field at the Reed Street complex? Yes or no? And you are directed to serve this warrant posting attesting the copies of each of the six precincts no later than seven days preceding said election. Hear of and fail not make return of this warrant with your doings for the town clerk at the time and place of said election. Given us, given our hands, this, what day is it? 17th day of May 2016, and signed by the five members of the Board of Selectmen, there is a list of where we have to post it, and we've met our legal requirement if the Board will vote to post the warrant.
Make a motion to post the warrant?
Second.
All those in favor? That's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda, item number five, we have appointments.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'm going to recuse myself from the...
We have a number of appointments we can do prior to rent control.
Okay, you want to do those first?
Yes.
Yeah, we can get those done, then...
Then I will.
Rent control looks like it's full house tonight, so we'll go with that one afterwards.
And we will continue to have some appointments. Most are due May 1st. Council on Aging, three-year term, Gene Callahan, 7 First Circle, Cinder Childs, 24 Lancaster Street.
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a vote.
Plymouth County Advisory Board, Michael P. Mullen, Jr., 127 Levin Road. As you know, Larry Chaffee did this for years. Mike Johnson was kind enough to fill in during Larry's absence last year. Mike Mullen has graciously volunteered to assume the roles.
Have at it. Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
There you go.
Taxation Aid Committee, it's an annual appointment, Patricia Penny, 30 Central Ave., Center Ave.
Motion to approve? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a vote.
Gonna screw me up, changing who's making motions. Zoning Board of Appeals, it's a five-year appointment. The zoning board is charged with hearing petitions from property owners for zoning bylaw appeals. Robert Rosa, 474 Beach Street.
Motion to approve? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a vote.
And now...
Mr. Ryan?
Mr. Chairman, I will recuse myself, as my sister is the President of the Leisure Woods Association.
Okay.
The TV controls are on my desk. I know you can put the meeting on Channel 16. Rent Control Board, three years, three-year term.
I had asked Mr. Clifford to come tonight and explain a little bit how rent control works, what the role is. I know there's been some confusion out there and misconceptions, and I've been the liaison for rent control for some time, and I can recall that originally, when rent control started, a lot of the meetings were contentious. Then finally, the park owners and the town, with the blessing of the residents, agreed to utilize CPI for rent increases as an index. So, I'll let Mr. Clifford fill everybody else in and just reiterate that again, so we understand how rent control works and what the town's role in rent control is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe the rent control bylaw was passed in 2005, and from 2005 to 2010, there was a great deal of litigation involving rent control in the town. We actually failed to appoint a rent control board back then. The park owners took us to court, forced us to appoint that board because they were seeking increases. Ultimately, a board was appointed, but the process, as you alluded to, was very contentious. Not only was it contentious, it actually resulted in higher, pretty high, rent increases as well. We actually modified the process through changes in the rules and regulations twice. The first was to change to a consumer price index basis to consider any rent increase. And since we've done that, the rent increases have actually averaged between 1% and 2%. I believe we had one year where there was only 0.9%. That is substantially lower than they were back when, before we adopted CPI. We adopted further regulations to clarify what the rent control board's role really is. And I think this is probably the biggest point of confusion among residents of all three parks. The rent control board acts on an economic analysis of whether or not the park owners are due a rent increase, and they can apply for one every year. The rent control board does not, it's not their role to intervene in landlord-tenant disputes involving the condition of property unless those disputes rise to the point where there's a significant health or safety issue. So, the rent control board, really their process right now is the park owner submits an application for an increase based on what the Consumer Price Index was the previous November. And a lot of you have been to the meetings, it really is a pretty straightforward up-or-down vote. We no longer consider maintenance issues or any of those things because they're not a legal basis for the rent control board to deny the increases anyway. For the past two or three years, I think the rent control board has functioned really well. The town hasn't incurred substantial legal costs trying to manage the process, and I think the best result, the most important result, is that it's achieved very low rent increases for the residents. The town is aware, the Board is aware, that most of the people who live in this park are on fixed income. Any increase is certainly a burden, but the process has resulted in lower rent increases than it would have otherwise. And I really want to thank and congratulate the members of the Board that have served on this. It's a volunteer board. Judy Hartigan, who's been the Chair since, I think, 2009, has done a phenomenal job. Chuck Squatrito, who's also been on the Board since that time, has done a great job as Representative Hillcrest. And I also want to recognize Estelle Starter, who's made, you know, her and Chuck have certainly advocated for the tenants, but they've done their homework and they've done a good job on behalf of the Board. And again, as you, Mr. Chairman, you know, I've been to almost all of the meetings, so, you know, we've certainly seen that Board in action.
Yeah.
The one thing I wanted to point out, the rent control bylaw was adopted before I came to work for the town. There is something of an anomaly in this bylaw that the appointments do not come up, do not end until August 31st. No idea why it was written that way, but the bylaw actually says that these appointments are effective through July, August 31st. So, I believe one or two of the terms are coming up, but they're not coming up until August, so the Board doesn't really have to make a decision this evening if you're so inclined.
I also got a letter, and I think there's copies in everyone's books, that Leisure Woods Homeowners Association...
Can I hear you?
I'm sorry. My mic should be on, but...
How's it doing, Greenhouse?
What can I tell you? The Leisure Woods Homeowners Association did send a letter to the Board of Selectmen. It's in our books. They had approximately 50 people sign it, and it pretty much outlined what they were looking for, for their selection or their choice of a representative on the rent control board. Apparently, the current designee, according to the letter, has resigned her position, or abdicated her position with the Homeowners Association, and there's been lack of communication, apparently, on that side. I don't attend those particular meetings, so I really can't comment on that. And quite honestly, since CPI has been passed, that seemed to level out the increases and level out a lot of the concerns that most of the residents had up there. I've taken a step back from attending the rent control meetings. Initially, I attended everyone, and we've had many, whether they were in the high school cafeteria at the time, and then later on, once we had the renovated high school, they were over there in the small auditorium, a small lecture hall. So, I understand fully some of the concerns that you folks have out there. What I don't understand is the sudden desire for a change in the Board. I understand new people get in, new people elected, and they want to have other people convey certain messages, but from the town's standpoint, the rent control board meets, as Mr. Clifford said, annually, that's the most important time, is when they weigh in on the CPI, whether it's going to go up or down, and it's all tied to the Consumer Price and Index. That's what CPI is, which has been able to stabilize the rents for all the homeowners over there, something that I think was a pretty good thing based on where the rents were going in the past. I mean, as you know, you don't know what your rents were going to be from month to month. It was kind of at the whim of the owners, and whether there was a threat that an owner would sell. I think Hillcrest has been sold in the meantime, and I think the new park over there has opened up since then as well. So, there's three parks, and as far as representatives, let's see, you folks have put forth a Mr. Bert as a Homeowners Association, but I still trying to figure out what the issue is with the current appointee, if they've done anything to wrong you folks. I mean, I don't, I really don't know if there's anything that way.
No, not at all.
So...
Well, that's not true. That's not true.
It is true.
She is true.
She has not a dues-paying member of LA HOA.
Oh, come on.
She just needs to be a resident of the park.
That's all.
One second, Harvey.
You only need to be a resident within the park. There's no stipulation that says, okay, that a member need to be a member, a resident be a member of the Leisure Woods Homeowners Association. None at all. It says, "Representative of the residents of the parks within the town of Rockland." The three parks says, "You have named Mr..." Which name Clifford has mentioned. I should know, we've talked so many times.
I'm a little hurt, Harvey.
Don't be.
Ma'am?
Also, I think it should be stated that a letter was written and signed by 50 people.
I did say that.
Right. No one else of those 50 people were notified a letter was going to be written. No one was asked their opinion. I'm a dues-paying member of the HOA, and I had no idea that this was being done to our current representative, who has done the job for three years and done a good job. There's a lot of contention in our park at Leisure Woods, and that's what you're seeing here.
Well, I can understand that you had contention and you had a lot of issues initially because there was no mechanism in place at the time to offset, we'll say, rent increases that could be done just at the whim of the park owner, okay? So, town meeting had strongly supported rent control. Rent control, it took a little bit of time to get it sorted out to go with the CPI, but I think once that's been in place, I think it's been relatively smooth. Other than one instance that I can remember, we had a major snowfall, and the new manager at that time had to actually call in for some help so the roads could be cleared for emergency equipment, which the town did. We had follow-up meetings with the manager to put a plan in place so it wouldn't happen again. It was something that was an anomaly for, you know, that amount of snow at that time, but also for that manager because she wasn't familiar with the Northeast. So, that's been addressed and corrected. As far as what happens here between homeowners, that's typically done at your board meetings, not here in the public forum this way. But I just want to read off so everyone understands what rent control is. So, Section 4 of the town bylaws, Rent Control Board. The Selectmen shall appoint a rent control board consisting of seven members. Two of said members shall be representatives of landlords. Two of said members shall be representatives of tenants, and three of said members shall represent the public interest. The terms of office expire on August 31st, unless otherwise specified by the Selectmen, or unless such appointment is for an indefinite term. At their first regular meeting after the effective date of the provision, the Selectmen shall appoint members to initial terms as follows. One park owner representative and one public interest representative shall be appointed to a one-year term. One park owner representative, one resident/homeowner representative, and one public interest representative shall be appointed to two-year terms. And one resident/homeowner representative and one public interest representative shall be appointed to three-year terms. As each such initial term expires, subsequent appointments shall be made for terms of three years. Any vacancy occurring to the Board shall be fulfilled, excuse me, filled by the Selectmen for the unexpired term. In the event a rent control board is established pursuant to any other law, the Selectmen may appoint the rent control board established under said laws to rent control board under this bylaw. Number B, letter B, members of the rent control board shall receive no compensation for their services, but shall be reimbursed by the town for necessary expenses incurred in the performance of their duties. C, the rent control board, herafter called the Board, shall be responsible for carrying out the provisions of this bylaw and shall hire with the approval of the Selectmen. Such personnel as are needed shall promulgate such policies, rules, and regulations as will further provision of this article. I shall recommend to the town for adoption such bylaws as may be necessary to carry out the purpose of this bylaw. Before I hear from any more residents, I just wanted to hear from our rent control chairman. I know she's in the back of the room, and she's put in a lot of time as well as you folks, and I think it's, we should at least hear from Ms. Hartigan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Judy Hartigan, Chairwoman of the Rent Control Boards. One of the things that I think is troublesome to me right now is we're segregating two very different issues. We're segregating park issues with what rent control does. The two are mutually exclusive. In my historical tendency, tenets with the rent control board since 2009, we have gone from, as John intimated, we have gone, we have morphed, we were morphing into a regulatory body. We were touring the parks, we were looking at the parks, we were sharing information, and every no vote, we were litigating, the town was litigated, and it led to a draining of the town's resources, and the best thing that could have happened after three years was that the two parties came together to agree on the CPI. The reason why I sit on the rent control board is I'm, it's a passion of mine. I am a tenant of fairness, and I think that the equity between the agreement that we have now is actually a perfect agreement. That being said, longevity on the Board is important because we have taken it from step one, where it wasn't working, all the way to now, where I think it's working tremendously. In the interest of volunteers and members of the Board, as Mr. Clifford alluded to, Mr. Squatrito, who has been on the Board longer than I, is leaving. He has sold his home in Hillcrest and will no longer be part of that Board. He was not only my mentor, he was, he was a voice of reason, he was a tenant advocate, he was bright, he, well, he is bright. And was, always had his homework done and really had his heart in rent control. He, if you don't know, represented Hillcrest. He has since sold his home, so he's not, no longer eligible. We also lost Mr., are losing Mr. D'Enzo, I believe he's retiring. And in the interest of that, I would like to offer something for the Board to think of, in that losing two very important, significant people, in order for the rent control board to continue as successfully as it has, I would vote for, or ask for a status quo of the membership as we have it now, moving forward, at least so that we can kind of circumvent the changes that are going to be coming forward with the other open vacancies that are on the Board. So, that being said, it's volunteer, we do it because we care, and I would hope that you would consider whatever, whomever is proper, I will work with whomever is the right person to work with, as long as the right things are accomplished for the benefit of not only Leisure Woods, but Hillcrest and Lydon's. We can't forget the other two mobile parks. We're in it for them as well. So, that's what I have to offer, that's what I've had to offer since 2009, so, for what it's worth, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Before I take some discussion on the Board, I also wanted to read aloud the articles of organization for Leisure Woods. It says, "The purpose for which the corporation is formed as follows. To exercise, promote, and protect the privileges and interests of the residents of Leisure Woods Homeowners Association, Rockland, Mass. To foster healthy interests in the civic affairs of the community. To foster and develop good fellowship and pleasant use of the facilities. To foster and develop friendship and social activities among those residing in the community. To encourage and support favorable governmental regulation and interest in mobile home living. To inquire into abuses of the use of the community and the residents thereof, and to seek reformation thereof. The organization shall not carry on any activities not permitted to be carried on by a corporation exempt from federal income tax under Section 501(c) 7 of the IRS Code, 1954." The Rockland Zoning Board of Appeals, when they issued the permit for Leisure Woods, also said that, "Item number 10 was not later than the installation of mobile homes on any phase of the Leisure Woods Retirement Village. Applicants shall establish an association of the occupants of Leisure Woods Retirement Village, which will have the legal civil power to enforce the conditions of this variance, and also any reasonable rules and regulations of the association not in conflict with this variance or applicable law." of the association not in conflict with this variance or applicable law or regulations of any fate, stead, or municipal board. Agency or commission, such legal civil power on the part of the association to enforce the conditions of this variance should not be, operate to the exclusion of any power or authority available in the law to the Zoning Board of Appeals or to any other municipal authority. Prior to the installation of any mobile home on any part of Leisure Woods Retirement Village, applicants shall provide the Zoning Board of Appeals with certified proof of the formation of the Leisure Woods Retirement Village Association." So the town, as good stores, have done what they've had to do since the inception of Leisure Woods, and since the inception of rent control. The town can't fight the battles for you within the park. All the town was authorized to do was to have a rent control board to make sure that the rents were reasonable and to hear both sides from the residents and the park owners when an increase is proposed. Those are now done annually based on the fact that Mr. Clifford had negotiated that way back when. You've had a good, strong board in place who've advocated for you folks. So, everyone seems to be a little bit perplexed as to why the sudden change. I don't know if you have issues going on within the park, with the, with the home, with the park owners?
No.
Or if you have other issues in the park, but they're really not under the guise of the Board of Selectmen. I mean, the Board of Selectmen can take an applicant, they can review an applicant, they can have a discussion. I encourage people to get involved, I encourage people to get out there, but I don't encourage people to willfully change something if it's not broken. And I'm not saying that what you have isn't broken, I'm not saying it doesn't need to be fixed. I don't know. Since CPI, that was the premise of rent control, was to stabilize the rents. That seems to have been effective. Now, whether you have a lack of communication on your side with some of the Homeowners Association members or not, I can't say. I'm only going based on the letter that was submitted to the board, and 50 people did sign it. But there's 300-plus people over there, so I don't know how the other 250-plus people feel about it, okay?
I don't know about it.
There's 500 party some odd people over there.
So, I don't know how the rest of them feel about it.
That's right.
So, from my point of view, I don't want to see the Board of Selectmen become a wedge between a change and, we'll say, leadership with the Homeowners Association. Our role as selectmen, this board, is to ensure that the bylaw is fulfilled, meaning that we do our best to make sure that rent control is in place and that any increases or any issues are weighed out and they're taken care of promptly. And I think the board's been able to do that, and as you heard from Judy, there's a lot to have continuity and to have, we'll say, continuation of some things so people can remember what the past was, so they can go back. It's difficult at times because sometimes it gets emotional. Most people don't get involved, at least in politics, or come before unless there's an issue that drives them. I know myself, I got involved in politics because it was an issue that drove me. So, believe me, I understand that wholeheartedly. But at the same time, we have to look at why we're asking for a change in that appointment from you folks versus if the towns, from the towns' position, it doesn't appear to be broke at the moment unless somebody tells us otherwise. And I, I don't know where the disconnect is because, in my opinion, and I don't, I can't speak for the entire board, but in my opinion, it seems that CPI has been very effective, and it seems to have leveled everything out. As far as the upkeep, the maintenance, other than the major snowstorm issue that I spoke about, that was the only thing that was brought to our attention. That was brought to us by both our fire chief and our police chief because of emergency situations. But I don't know how many times they mow the lawn, I don't know how many times they sweep the streets over there, I don't know how many times they paint the clubhouse. It has nothing to do with us.
No, I, I listen, I agree with you with what you're saying.
I agree with John, and I agree with what Judy has said. There's been no problem as far as the rent, what's going on, especially with the CPI and the way we, we have it now. We have, I think, I believe another four years, it's 2020, I think, is when it ends. And, but anyways, no complaints from that side whatsoever. And that's why I like the way the board is running it now. I'd like to see, see to it that it stays that way.
I'll get you in one sec.
I just want to be clear for the board members. There are four names in front of you. One is a recommendation from Hillcrest, which is an owner. The other is a recommendation from Hometown America, which is an owner's park representative. The second two names were the applicants for a park position.
That's what I was going to ask. How many positions are there?
So, the owners' positions are uncontested. The last two names on that list.
One for those two.
One of those two.
We have two leaving, right?
So, what we could do, we could, somebody could.
But not. And I understand we don't have to do it until the 31st. So, I mean, something to think about, 31st of August, right?
Correct.
Okay, I think there's a gentleman.
So, quick question before, before we move any further.
I just wanted to get the one guy in the audience, Mike.
That's fine.
Sir?
Can I come up here?
Sure.
Hi.
My name's Alden Shores. I live at 19 Hawthorne Street in Leisure Woods. I'm the current Vice President of the Leisure Woods Homeowners Association. We call it LHOA. It is not a club, it's a corporation. And you, and the chairman read some of the things that I wanted to say, that the Board of Directors would recommend that Bill Barrett be appointed to the Rent Control Board by the selectmen. And the reason I say that is, the town fathers, namely the Rockland Zoning Board of Appeals, as the chairman said, back in July 23rd, 1979, part of the, part of the granting of the variances were, "Prior to the installation of any mobile home onto the part of Leisure Woods Retirement Village, applicants shall provide Zoning Board of Appeals with certified proof of the formation of the Leisure Woods Retirement Village Association." Now, that's, the town fathers did that. I think we're the only manufactured home park within Massachusetts that has an association, and it was established because of the town fathers, not, not because of anything else. The town fathers, that was one of the granting of the variances, that that was happening, okay? So with that, on May 23rd, 1988, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Article of Association formed a corporation known as Leisure Woods Homeowners Association, and the purpose of the corporation is as follows: "To exercise, promote, and protect the privileges and interests of the residents of Leisure Woods Homeowners Association, and to encourage and support favorable government regulation and interest." Well, the Commonwealth made us a corporation, we followed through, we have bylaws, okay? We have an election. We just had an election on April 27th, where we have 13 members of the board, four are officers, the president, the vice president, the secretary and the treasurer, and nine at lodge. The people in Leisure Woods, we had an open election, we were elected. The Board of Directors has the responsibility to manage the park for the residents of the park.
No, they don't.
Wait a minute, I'm speaking.
Let me finish first, please, okay?
Here's the floor, maybe you're the floor.
So what happened is, we have, we have a Board of Directors that are in the park, and the people come to us with situations as such, and it's.
Everyone, please hold the comments. Give him the same respect that you want yourself, please.
So what happens is, the Board of Directors are the people that represent the people in the park, and the Board of Directors are recommending that Bill Barrett be appointed by you selectmen. And the reason for that is, and you said, what's the underlying reason? The thing is, the previous president or vice president, which was Estelle Stoddard, walked off the job, walked off before their term was up. We've never heard from them ever since, never heard from them. They've never come to a meeting, they've never done anything, they've not. So, as the board, we said, well, we have to have somebody that represents us, that will, will talk with us, acknowledge, tell us what's happening. We've heard no word from those, from Estelle Stoddard about anything. So, that's why we're recommending. If she had stayed a member and came to meetings, I don't think we'd have a problem. But, but she hasn't been there, we don't know what's going on, nothing's ever said, so that's why we recommended Bill, Bill Barrett.
Pass question, pass question. So do I take it that this letter was drafted at least by the board?
Yes.
And I understand there's like 500 people there.
Yes.
Did you ask all 500 people to?
No.
Well, I guess, okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to get some information, just because it's only 50 people signed it, and I, you know, it's 500 people there.
The point is, it was signed like a week ago, okay? We have, every, every, once a month on Saturdays, we have a coffee thing. People come in. We've gone around the park asking people to sign them, and they, and if they, if they missed it, they missed it. I can't help it.
Okay, no, but I guess I'm just trying to figure out, because if you asked everyone in the place and only 50 people signed it, no, no, no. I understand the people that are shaking their head wouldn't have signed it anyway. My point is, if you passed it around and had, and had 500 people review it and only 50 signed it, well, that gives us a pretty good mandate, I suppose, if we even want to wade into this. But I guess, your term, you, were you just, just elected recently?
Yeah, this is my second year as Vice President.
Okay, when's your term up again?
It's once a year.
Oh, it's one, okay. Well, that will be a bellwether as to what people are going to do, I suppose, but.
Well, the.
He's just been reelected.
Yeah, okay, all right. But I mean, this issue is now coming up after that, so I guess what I'm trying to.
And I was re-elected with 164 to 62 against my opponent, so.
Not 500.
So.
Good. Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure this out.
No, no, but, but the chairman asked what the problem was, and that's the problem, that we haven't, you know, you can see there's two different groups here, and.
I'm trying to figure that out.
Yeah.
But the, the, I guess, let me ask you this, that, is it just that Ms. Stoddard, the current member, who I understand we have support from the chairperson of that rent control, is she fulfilling her duties as a rent control board officer?
Yes.
I don't know, because she hasn't reported anything back to us. We don't really know.
I don't know if she's tasked to report back to you as much as she's supposed to report to us.
Well, well, whatever, we don't know.
Yeah.
We don't know.
She represents Leisure Woods.
She represents the town.
She represents Leisure Woods.
To our point.
No, she doesn't. She represents the residents.
How are the residents notified for the current rent control meetings?
We get a little from management.
Judy?
The, the legal basis for that is, we get the board together when it's, when it's time for the rent increase for any particular mobile park. Once we determine a date that each one of the board members can meet, we send out the hearing notice, letting every one of the residents know, this is when the hearing is going to be. It is then published three consecutive weeks in The Mariner, and it's also posted up on the board here. In answer to Mr. Shores' concern, disseminating information about what the decisions have been for the rent control board, it's clearly stated in all of that advertising that all of that information is ready, is at the clerk's office and at your own community center. All the meetings are taped, all the meetings have minutes. There is no secretary. If there were a secretary, it would, that, that would fall, that responsibility would fall on the secretary. As chairman, I kind of, and we have a new board member that's relatively new, so I can't instill on her the responsibility of doing some things. But as chairman, I'm the one that makes sure that everything is delivered to the residents of both Leisure Woods and, I need to reiterate, Hillcrest. It's not just Leisure Woods, it's Hillcrest and Live Oaks as well.
Right, I understand.
That is disseminated according to the date of the hearing, sent out to you. People are given, all 500 people plus are given the opportunity to send me back notifications saying they would like to speak at the hearing.
Right.
Probably of the 500-plus that we send out, I might get 12 back to speak.
The, the other two parks, do they have people that are similar to Estelle Stoddard in representatives of each of those parks on this floor?
Yes.
Speech?
They had Chuck, Chuck represented Hillcrest.
Got it, okay.
And there is an opening technically, if you're going to consider Live Oaks as separate, even though it's under the umbrella of Hometown America, Live Oaks is kind of an anomaly, and then it's a smaller park, and it's owned by Hometown.
Okay.
So, the represent, Estelle represents Leisure Woods, Chuck represented Hillcrest, Kim represents the park owner for Hometown America. There was no representative.
The only one before us is the one.
And that is three.
The only one before us is the one. I was going to say, if this is other openings.
But as far as, as far as, as far as sending out information and, and alerting people, I mean, I, I just need to reiterate that that's not the role of the rent control board.
And I understand that.
You have your own board, and it's not any one of the rent control board's responsibility to come out. I mean.
Right.
Case in, case in point, not to be disrespectful, but I am always accessible to every one of you people that come into the town hall as a public building. I am the tax collector, but yet I will give all of my time and offer any services I can when anyone has any questions. We've gone over and above what we need to do, and so if there's information that you need, you just need to ask.
I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is this, that Estelle Stoddard used to be the president of LHOA, and she was the vice president the year that she walked away from the job, and we've never heard from her again. We, 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 by being a corporation, we have certain responsibilities that we have to adhere to for the state, which I read and which the chairman read. And the point was that to fulfill that job, we have a Board of Directors, and the Board of Directors feel we'd like a change, we'd like a change in the rent control board, and where we are a corporation, I think we voted we'd like to have Bill Barrett.
Can I ask a question? Just by, just by, can I just, can I, one second?
One second, Harvey.
If she, I get some questions, I'm, I'm sorry, maybe I'll have some. But if you, if she walked off her job at the LHOA and, and did that, I guess that's, okay, that's a problem.
Right.
But how does that affect rent control? I mean, if, because what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is a rent control.
She represents residents, not LHOA.
Understood. No, no, so my point is, even if she did a terrible job at LHOA.
Right, right.
From what I understand, rent control, from what I'm hearing, is going well, and when I first got on this board, we had lawsuits, after lawsuits, after lawsuits, after lawsuits, and it was getting to the point where I was even thinking of getting rid of it, you know? And I think it's been pretty stable. And I, I, I always try to judge boards and committees about, we don't hear about them. If we don't hear about them, then they must be doing a good job, because when we, when things go wrong, that's generally when we hear about it. And I guess tonight we're hearing about something, but I don't know if it's, it's apples and oranges, it seems to me.
Well, we're not asking you to be in the middle of an argument. What we're asking is, we're, we're, by the, by the state Articles of Organization, that we're a corporation, and we have our Board of Directors, that the Board of Directors, in the majority, would like to change.
But I guess, is, is, are we required to follow that? I don't think we are.
No, no, you aren't, no. But I'm just, as, as being, on, on the board for LHOA, that the board is requesting a different change, that's all.
Got it. No, I just, but you're up here, so I wanted to ask some questions. This is new to me. I walked out here, I didn't know what everyone was here for.
Right.
Well, getting back to your previous point of communication, I know that sometimes I go to other meetings. I go to other meetings, so I can understand what's happening at those meetings, and I'll come back, I'll report to the board what transpired. Does anybody on LHOA do that now?
Come back and tell us what's.
Well, yeah, to anybody, out of your 13-member board, does anybody attend the rent control meetings?
Yes, they have.
Come back and report to everybody.
Yes, they have.
Yes, they have.
And one of the reports, are the reports positive? They sound like they must be.
It's not that we are not happy with the results of the board. We're very happy with the results of the board. We're kind of taking it back because of the fact that the three-year term was up, and we assumed that rightfully, we could come and say, we would like you to appoint this person who is more communicative with the board and the residents and LHOA, because LHOA represents all the residents as well.
Well, you know, I see this letter, and I think, God, I wouldn't want this letter written about me and signed by 50 of my, it's, it's a little more than a recommendation. And I see it as a little bit more of a.
Well, this is because, like you said, taken it back, the last meeting, when it came to a stop and was postponed, because you felt that someone should be in infinitum in place.
Well, I, I think what happened at the last meeting, we were trying to get our hands around what was actually happening, and was there any other underlying issues with rent control board? So, we didn't want to be, we did not want to jump the gun without knowing, and since that meeting, I've met with Mr. Clifford as well as Ms. Harriken, to ask if there's any ongoing issues. And to the best of my knowledge, there are not. Again, things change, and people want different people in. I can't, I can't help that. But at the same time, I'm trying to figure out, from the town's perspective, what, what do you think, or what, what is the agenda gonna be, and what do you hope to achieve by putting somebody else in, other than communication? Because if you're all in agreement in this room tonight, that CPI is working, it's been much better since it's been in place, then what is the need to change, other than communication? And I suggested something as rash as just saying, maybe you designate some members from your LHO board to go to meetings and report back. I, I mean, if you're notified of when rent control meetings are, so you can't say you don't know when they are.
The representative is supposed to.
What's that?
Why do we need to put people in place to back up a representative who does not come forward?
Well, I think, you're missing, I don't think the representative is there to report to you guys, as much as it's giving you guys a voice at the table. Because management gets their, or landlords get their voice, this is, this is your voice to kind of, well, but, but it sounds like it is, right? I mean, you haven't had a large rent increase in a while, and that's really, I think, what, if it was me, I'd rather have no communication, have my rent go up 1% than, than.
I don't think that includes the.
I don't think it does either, but if I had to choose, I, I, I mean, I, this is.
And that's the thing.
Yeah, but I, I get 50, 50 signatures on a 500, 500 resident place, I just don't know if that's true, you know, if this is a personality issue, and, and, and a, and 50 people, you know, out of 500, that's.
Just to, I think, bring to, bring to the board the fact that.
We couldn't fit 500 here, thankfully.
But we did not go to 500 people.
No, we did not.
You didn't.
I know.
No way.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
And we just talked about, you know, and I've, I'm thinking a lot about this, I have a, a bunch of questions, but in terms of the voices of the people, one thing that we, we have two people going for one position, and we haven't, and I would actually love if they're here, you know, to have them, not answer this whole back and forth that's happened, but to really just, you know, say hello, and, you know, let us know who they are, a little bit, why they're running, and that would, first of all, I mean, we've heard so much about, and these people, but we haven't, and I would love to hear from them, first of all, so, if, if they're here, and if they're willing to, you know, just come up and introduce themselves, and just explain a little why they're.
Our representative has just been out of town, and just back this morning, so he was unable to.
Estelle, you're here. Estelle was here.
Maybe we should table it and have.
No, no. You don't get to table their meetings.
I was.
The appointment, honey.
So, currently, Live Oaks is our representation?
The bylaw calls for two representatives of tents. At the time, there were two parks. Now, there are three parks. So, clearly, it makes sense to have one representing Leisure Woods, but I think the other two parks should have some representation. So, when we, when it comes time to fill Mr. Squartito's vacancy, hopefully, we can get somebody from one of the other two parks.
Okay. Because then you'd have another, another person possibly to put in, and if somebody chose not to. Estelle, did you want to say something?
He's the man, don't look at me, he's the one that calls it. That's why he gets the big bucks.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Zero.
Okay, here I am. Look, I've been on this, I've been involved with rent control since 2006, when I was first elected president here in the park. And I had to go before town meeting and defend the rent control bylaw, and we got it passed. And then we had dozens and dozens of meetings to set up the bylaws and the rules and regs, and then I had to go back two other times to town meeting to defend the bylaw, because somebody put it on to get rid of rent control, and I've done that. And since then, I've been on the board, and I've worked very hard to make sure, and my understanding of what I'm supposed to do is to make sure that home, that the CPI is what Hometown America has agreed to go with for 10 years, we're only halfway through that. And our job is, are they going by CPI? Is there any reason to say no? But it has to be a legal reason, it has to be health or safety. And they have to have gone before boards or the housing court and gotten something saying that health and safety was violated. It hasn't been, to our knowledge, yet. So, every single time it comes up for a vote, they ask for CPI. That's what we're mandated to do. Now, yes, I have, I have not joined the association this year yet, but that's beside the point, because my job is to, for one thing, most, many, many of these people, some of them on the board, were at that meeting in February. We meet once a year. We don't meet 20 times a year, we just meet once a year in February to decide on rent control. Everyone is there, they can ask all the questions they want, and they'll get answers if they ask them. But then, everything is sent out, everybody knows what happened, because they were there. So, basically, I don't feel there's any reason for me, if they want me to report to them, all they have to do is ask me. Tell me they want me to come give a report, but what is there to report? We had a meeting in February, we approved a CPI increase, it took, it's taken effect, that's it. There's nothing else to report, because we, the only other time we meet during the year of the rent control, we meet for Live Oaks rent increases, usually in May or June, and then we meet during the summer for Hillcrest. Maybe once or twice a year for Hillcrest, we have to meet for evictions. But other than that, we only meet once a year for Leisure Woods, and people came to the meeting, they asked their questions, they know what happened, and if, as they say, if they had, if they needed to hear from me, all they had to do was ask. I haven't heard from any of them either, so I don't feel that I have to show up every month, to just say, well, there's nothing to report. And that's what happened with a lot of.
Well, if you don't have meetings every, if you only have meetings once a year, what is there?
There's nothing to report.
Yeah.
That's the way I feel.
I'm glad you came up, because that.
But I'm open to questions, if you have any.
Any other questions for the board?
I know, it was just helpful to hear from you and your perspective, and that was really helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Sir?
I walk great, and I live through Leisure Woods in the park. I think the main issue was, when Estelle was president, she was always, you know, with the board as president, and always telling you, you gotta come to the meeting, you gotta support the LHOA, and when she was on the rent control board, she was, I got the floor. Give me the approval. Whenever it melted off, but I'm at the, I got the floor, you can have your chair, I control.
Speak to the chairman.
I'm trying to, but people were interrupting me.
The chairman.
Like I said, like I was saying, she always came to the meetings, she always told us about rent control, she always gave us, you know, an update of what's going on. Now, all of a sudden, I see it, three months before the elections come, Earl and Harvey dropped the ball, said, we're not being president, I'm not gonna be vice president, they walked out of the, they walked out of the meeting, the LHO meeting. They assigned Sally, our treasurer, to run the meeting. So, our confidence in them really dropped, because they dropped the ball, they left us hanging with nobody in the offices. We had a reelection, but that's when Alden Schors and Nancy jumped on the ball, and we, the board made them president and vice president to the election, which they got elected last year. But from that point on, when they walked out of the room, we hadn't seen how, I didn't. They don't come to the meetings, they don't support any of the LHO functions, and they're just like, they're out there, they're not even, they don't have any, I don't know why they even want to be.
That's right.
We just lost, we just lost all confidence in them, and being on the board, myself, and the residents, because we are the government board, and we do kind of represent the residents. Whether we, we're not gonna, it's impossible to represent every resident, everybody, you're not gonna make anybody happy. And obviously, we found out that you're not gonna make everybody happy. But they just dropped, they just dropped the association, they dropped their responsibility right out the door, and that's why we lost confidence in that, and that's why we were suggesting that we'd like to have somebody on the board, on the rent control board that is, you know, like you said, to communicate. Well, it's just scary when they don't, they don't say anything, or they, they don't, they don't do any of the functions, and the election this year was a disgrace, a goddamn disgrace.
Sir?
I think my language, my language.
Good job that Estelle has done. The issue here is that the board has recommended someone to replace her.
Yes.
And in any political situation, the president or whatever, he can pick anybody he wants to do to replace someone. So, the issue is, they do not want Estelle Stoddard to represent us any longer. It's as simple as that. Whether she's done the best job, or the greatest job, they do no longer wish her participation.
That's not true. That's this law.
Just for the, just for the education of the audience, I don't think it's been the history of this board to not reappoint people, take that decision very lightly. And at this point, I, you know, I guess the most charitable thing we could say is that there is some division down there. We have no basis to conclude that a majority of the residents of Leisure Woods support the non, non-reappointment of Mrs. Star. I don't think there's enough information to conclude.
They don't. And that's what they want to do.
There's no rent control board in the bylaws. You don't have the right to pick the representative.
Well, one of the things is.
It must be Harvey.
That is.
Well, one of the things is, and I think.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
Harvey can speak for himself. One of the things is, and in my opinion, the two, again, in my opinion, have to remain exclusive, like, is the, is the LHOA, you know, and that whole process, and this process, and I, you know, I've, I do view them as exclusive to each other. I know it's the same area and a lot of the same people, but I, you know, I do, you know, I don't think that, in my opinion, that I can mandate that I came out of a most recent, like, like LHOA election is, you know, like, is necessarily the complete basis for a change in an appointment. I really, I really think on the town side, there has to be, at least, for me, some better rationale, some better reasoning, because there is, as, you know, like as Attorney Clifford mentioned, as old Mr. Kimball mentioned, there is a history there, there's a lot at our stake here, in terms of the town's liability, in terms of all of our liability here, and, and obviously, I mean, this is, you know, parochial, it's a pocketbook issue for all of us, and it's, it's something that, you know, none of us, obviously, here are taking lightly, but I do just hope that we just keep the LH, the LHOA, you know, election exclusive from the issue before us this evening, but that's just my opinion.
Harvey, you want to say something before, are you all set?
Can I come forward, or?
If you want to come up, if you want to make the walk.
I don't, I don't, how far do I get up?
I don't want to be too repetitive, because I think that John covered the whole cycle in excellent detail. Thank you, John. Back in 2006 is when we actually submitted the bylaw for rent control, and that was done at the May 7th annual meeting. It was finally approved and posted on July the 25th, okay, of 2006. We went through many, many years of litigation. It must have cost the association, as well as the town, and Hometown America, close to $150,000 to $200,000 in total. John took the bull by the hand, by the tail, by the tail, John, okay?
I prefer horn.
Okay, the horn, okay. You took, you took the bull by the horn, and although we had some contentious meetings over at the high school, I have to admit at this point in time, that the changes to the rules and regulations that were made on 5/13 or 14 were the correct changes to the rules and regulations, in order to keep the cost of litigation down, and at the same time, keep the rents down within the three parks that we live here in Rockland. And thank you, John, again. Now, we're at a point of, Estelle was the first one to present the bylaw at the 2007 meeting, and got a unanimous approval on the bylaw, after she had only taken over as president two weeks into her term. She did an excellent job. And as she had mentioned today, too, she stood up before the meeting two more times and got a, a vote to not rescind the rent control, so that we're here today, being able to talk about the rent control. So, I, Estelle has done an excellent job. I think that she has listened well, she knows the bylaws, she knows the rules and regulations, she knows when she needs to vote in a certain way, based upon the legal information that's in those documents. And I had a bunch of notes, but I'm better impromptu than reading off a note. At this point in time, I'd like to make a recommendation to the, to the board, okay, that Estelle Stoddard be reappointed for another three-year term to the Rockland Rent Control Board. She's proven herself well. Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. Any other discussion from the board?
Well, after all that, I understand we don't have to do anything till August 31st. I don't mean, I'm joking, it's pushing the ball down the field that I don't think it's going.
Judy, when's your next meeting, and for which park is it?
We actually have a meeting Monday, June 6th, at 6:30 for Live Oaks.
Now, that is different than the one annual meeting.
Each park has its own separate rental proposal increases. So, we technically, we meet maybe five times, three for the increases for each park, and unfortunately, maybe twice for evictions and hillcrests.
They're just on a different date cycle when the, when the increase goes into effect. I guess it's all based on the November CPI prior year, so Live Oaks will come up this
Any other questions or discussion amongst the board?
The only thing, I mean, if, I mean, I know there's a question whether or not we hold off, but I'm not sure what, if anything, what. off, but I'm not sure what, if anything, would change between now and then, I mean, in terms of, in terms of our facts, or, I mean, of anything else. I mean, the hard part is, I mean, we have a group of people here who, you know, like, and two people here who want to be involved, and, you know, I mean, as, as all of us have talked, I mean, usually, we have a challenge of, you know, trying to find people to be involved.
A lot of body comes up with your point, right.
Exactly. Now, we have, you know, for a variety of reasons, multiple people, and that's refreshing, but my inclination is, would be to, I had to make a motion to reappoint Estelle Stoddard at the Rent Control Board, but I'm not sure what the, what the will of the rest of the board is, but...
Well, I just want to say, I've been listening quietly, kind of soaking it all in, and, you know, I don't know, it seems like this, you know, Estelle's kind of spearheaded the whole rent control thing. I would find it hard, given what I understand the separation of, between the Rent Control Board and the homeowners, the association within, you know, Leisure Woods is. It seems like there's some political thing, or, you know, I don't, another underlying thing going on there that's carrying over to this, which are completely two separate entities to me. One has absolutely really nothing to do with the other, especially when the meeting happens once a year, you get an update. I mean, you can't expect her to go to every meeting and say the same update every single time. I mean, it's one meeting a year, so it just seems to me that, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, you know? So, I mean, that's my, my sentiment, and I would, with you, I'd second that.
Before we vote on it, I just wanted to say, based on the mere fact that there's another rent control meeting coming up next week...
You can postpone that, too.
I don't know if a new appointee would be, would behoove the town to be brought up to speed and do that job. That's one. Two, we don't have to actually reappoint anybody until 8:31. This is only May, so we still have June, July, and we have August. As far as I know, snowbirds don't go away in the summer, right? So, the birds are back, so it's still feeding time. The two park representatives, I mean, I could entertain a motion for those, because those aren't contested. As far as the Leisure Woods designee, I would almost go on a limb to say, based on tonight's conversation, that I think Estelle has heard the other side, the opposing side, tonight, looking for communication. I would probably go out on a ledge a little bit and say that, based on the new meetings coming up, that people are going to be more involved, and I think Estelle would be cognizant of the fact of reporting back to the opposing side. And I would even say, we wouldn't even have to appoint that person, we could even wait a month till after the outcome of the following meetings, to go through and see if communication has improved, or to see if you folks can kind of get a larger consensus, if you will. If it's the will of the board that they want to replace somebody, then the board should go out and make sure that they tell all the people, just as a regular political environment, and say, this is what we want to do, either, maybe you have an election to say, this is who we want, and you can elect someone on your side to represent you, or appoint, to appoint from the town. When I say elect, you can determine, but, again, it seems to be a split faction right now. There's been no, nothing on my side that would prohibit me from appointing Estelle, because in my opinion, based on all the Rent Control Board meetings I've gone through, she's been effective, she's done her job well. I don't know why she stepped away from the Homeowners Association, I can't speak for Estelle for that, those are personal issues for her and you folks to sort out, not to be done on public TV with the town. And again, I mean, from the town's point of view, we just want to make sure that rent control remains effective for not only you folks, but also for us on the town, that we don't get into protracted legal battles and things like that, that had started when it was originally introduced. That's why, when you talk about town meetings, a lot of people wanted to have it rescinded or voted down, because they didn't want to deal with the additional expense, and the burden that it was putting on the town. Fortunately, the town chose to continue with rent control, and you people are actually seeing the fruits of that labor by making sure that rents are at a point where everyone can live and survive on fixed incomes, and we understand that more than anyone. So, I, for one, don't want to see rent control go away, but I don't want to see rent control become the monster it was when it was first introduced. So, I know we have a motion, and we have a second, and before we vote on it, did you want to say anything?
No, I, John struck a chord when he said that we have a history of reappointing people, and I'm hearing from the chairperson of the board that she serves on, I'm hearing from you who, like, go to every meeting, I don't know how he does it, but he goes to everything, telling me that things are going well. I'm hearing from not having any issues with rent control, that the job's being done, whether or not there's an issue with LHOA, it seems to be a collateral issue. I'm ready to vote on the motion that's proposed, but I would also add that why don't we, at the same time, do one motion to appoint Mark Baptiste, Kimberly D'Enzo, and Estelle Stoddard?
Okay, so we have a...
A motion to appoint, do I need one separate motion for each, or one motion for all?
You can do what you want.
No, that's the motion.
Second. All right, so we have a, so we have a second, any other...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my motion was to appoint Mark Baptiste, Kimberly D'Enzo, who are the managers, and then Estelle Stoddard, to reappoint.
So, we have a motion, we have a second, any others?
Who's Mark Baptiste?
Well, he's the one from Hillcrest.
He's the oldest rep from Hillcrest.
He's the oldest representative for Hillcrest.
If I understand it, we have, we have three openings, two landlord openings, and one Leisure Wood, with two people running for that one.
Excuse me?
Sure.
I have one, one problem with Mark Baptiste. If you look at the charter, Article 2, Section 2.01D...
It says that the...
Do you have your notes, Harvey?
If you, if you refer to the town charter, which I believe has precedence over the bylaw, as the, it would in the state, the constitution has precedence over the statutes, and that is, is that it's clearly specified that in 2.01D, that any appointments to boards or commissions be of registered voters within the town of Rockland. I don't believe Mr. Baptiste is a Rockland-registered voter. Is that, that's in the charter?
I'm not sure that he is or he isn't, but I believe that we, you know, the park owners obviously have a limited ability to appoint people, but they have statute-based ability to put someone on that board.
2.01 does say that, and, and Mark Baptiste has told me personally, that he resides in Taunton, and he travels to work here from Taunton, and he's a voter in Taunton.
Mr. Clifford?
Where we have another, another park owner representative actually here, Deb Robey.
Okay, all I, all we have before is four names. Baptiste, D'Enzo, Stoddard, and Burt.
And Deb Robey put in an application also.
Then I guess...
I don't have that application.
You want to just do two of them? And table the other one?
She's the assistant community manager, and lives in Rockland.
Does she also work at Hometown?
Yes. So what? So doesn't Kim.
It's not a conflict, you don't know what a...
But we do, well, I do. On our, on our, on our page here, it says he's Taunton. Yeah. But that's not on his application, I don't have anyone's application, but the, the sheet, all right, then why don't we, I mean, would you do the two, and then table that one till we can figure it out? If, if, from what I understand, another application's been put in today.
There have been a number of emails that have gone back and forth between Mr. Clifford...
Well, we table them all, until August 31st.
Well, there's only, there's only the one that's in question that I'm aware of, and that's Deb Robey.
Mr. Chaka?
She works at Hometown.
Thank you, thank you, Harvey. Mr. Chaka?
There's been a number of emails going back and forth. Hometown would have a park representative, there is another park, the attempt was being made to provide the other park with representation as well, so...
We'll, we'll talk to them and see if they want to do it, but, I mean, I don't think it makes, it's really good to have two park representatives from one park.
So, the intention here was to make sure that both were represented. If you would like to table Mr. Baptiste at this point, you could, to make the other appointments.
I'll amend my motion.
I'll second the amendment, the motion.
So, that's to appoint Kimberly D'Enzo...
Estelle Stoddard.
Estelle Stoddard.
Okay, any others?
Starting in August 31st, right? I mean, these appointments are making in May and...
We'll make them the three-year ones.
Do we want to stagger them at that point?
We'll stagger Baptiste.
Okay. So, any other discussion? All those in favor then? All right, so that's a vote.
So, what was the...
I'm sorry, the motion, do you want to, I mean, I don't know.
The motion was made by Mr. Johnson to appoint Kimberly D'Enzo for Hometown America, 56 Lareterav, to reappoint Estelle Stoddard, Leisure Woods 2, Dogwood Circle, and we tabled Mark Baptiste from Hillcrest, based on a conflict with his residency. And we have until 8:31 to find an applicant for that, and if we can't, then we'll have to go to council and figure that one out, because under the statute, as Mr. Clifford said, the park owner has a rep that can go on there, and past experience, I know when Chuck was, Chuck was from Hillcrest, and he added a lot, at least in the meetings I attended, because Hillcrest is run entirely different, and it's a different, well, I want to say, it's a, it's a different type of use as far as the residents. You folks mainly are over 55, you travel a lot, that type of thing. Hillcrest is a little bit different, as far as the average age of the homeowner or person living in there, so it's a different demographic. And Chuck gave us more of a perspective on that. And as far as live votes...
The other thing I want to point out is, this entire bylaw is such an anomaly, we're actually putting people on the board by design that have a financial interest in the votes they pay. It runs totally contrary to the conflict of rent control, where we do it, so it's, it's an odd structure to stay, to be sure, but, and so there's a lot of difficult parts, but I, I was under the understanding that at least one of the owners' representatives in the past was a homeowner in the town as well, but...
It sounds as if the rent control board is just focusing on the CPA or the CPI every year, they're really not doing it. I mean, there's really no, there's almost not a need for the board. I'm sorry, Judy, and all due respect, but if, if it's just going to be reflective on what the...
Well, the exception of eviction.
Yeah.
I would agree to some extent, but it's not, it's not just a basic rubber stamp. I mean, there is, there is some, as John pointed out, if, if in fact, there is some presentation from homeowners that they've gone to a regulatory board, that Housing Court, the Building Department, that there's some specific issues that are not being addressed by the, the park owner, then it is not a rubber stamp, CPA, have a nice day. There is some, they've, the issue is that they've got to advocate for themselves, if there's something wrong in the park, if your foundation is cracked, if, if the pool is green, I mean, you've got to go to the Board of Health and the regulatory boards to do that, not the rent control board. So, it's, while it seems like a rubber stamp, there is area that it could be potentially denied if it's, if there are health issues that are presented to us via a regulatory board to support that in court.
I got it. I wasn't meaning...
Yes, you were.
I would enable it to work, is there has to be a balance, and I think there has to be a balance between the different parks in town and the owners of the different parks. So, Mr. Chaka is correct, it was an initiative to have two of the park owners' representatives in one park, you know, I, I agree, that would cause an imbalance, and, you know, potentially create some problems.
Well, at one time, the park was owned by the same people, until it was sold off, so there was no need for that additional one.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Smith?
May I come forward?
You can.
This will give us time to let council research, whether or not we have a requirement of...
Residency?
Residency with the rent control bylaw.
I just wanted to mention, and I, I don't know if John was aware of this or not, just to aid in the process, back in 2007, there was a recommended change made at an annual town meeting through a bylaw, I believe it was, I mean, through an article, Article 29, that the language in the charter be changed, in order to include that two representatives from non-voting Rockland representatives could sit on the board. That was unanimously opposed at town meeting.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Harvey.
I did know, Mr. Chairman, that the board, on occasion, in the past, had trouble having a forum, so we can get ourselves into that same situation again and not be able to...
Surely has to be some kind of rule necessity, right, like we have in the board? I mean, if they can't, they don't have an employee that lives in Rockland, I mean, what are you going to do?
In order to conflict under rule and necessity, you can't vote without a forum.
Well, I think we've heard from both factions tonight, and I hope that the appointee understands that they are looking to have some sort of communication back and forth on a regular And again, we can't fix the problems within the park, we can only maintain rent control to ensure that we're effective with maintaining your rents from going jumping on an annual basis. And if you want to change that, and go back to the old way, we could certainly entertain that, but I don't, I don't think that's something you really want to do right now, so... Can we summon Mr. Ryan? Can we, did he go home? Yeah, I think we're done here with rent control. Thank you all tonight for coming.
Harvey, can we get it?
If you don't mind.
We voted to Mark Baptiste for table, because he's not a resident. No, he's in Taunton, for a park owner. So, he was tabled. Kimberly D'Enzo and Estelle Stoddard were reappointed. Mr. Burt wasn't here tonight, but somebody else spoke on us, Alden spoke on...
And Mr. Burt wasn't here tonight, but somebody else spoke on us, Alden spoke on—
We need to sell some commercial airtime for these breaks, you know? Mike, do you want to advertise?
Mr. Johnson, you want to get— Time for a TV timeout?
You want to get your law firm up here on a, on a commercial break?
We have a TV timeout, we're going to get a guy with a big orange glove. TV timeout while we move.
We could maybe run puppet shows or something, I don't know.
We have dinner, I'd have dinner and a show anytime.
There we go.
Right out there like that.
I got it, before we finish up, Alan, I wanted to, based on appointments, we had late introductions for appointments for the SRA board. We had three new candidates proposed. Alan was away on vacation. The resumes didn't get sent over to late on Monday, but I did want to address it slightly for the board so that we can figure out what action to take or table. But at any rate, I want to let the people know that, I spoke with Kelly O'Brien today, McKinnon, she's here. She's one of our SRA, she's our appointee from Rockland, as well as Bill Minahan. And I've had some lengthy discussions with Bill Minahan. Currently, we have a joint pick with the town of Waymouth, and we've been unable to fill, fulfill that pick because there was some issues with some of the people having the ability to serve who submitted their names in the past. So, three additional people have resubmitted their names. Eric Miller was the original candidate. Margaret Caswell is a new candidate. Randy Webster's a new candidate, and Steve Lamont's a new candidate. And I just want to kind of touch on the fact that we heard tonight that when you have new people taking over a board, a lot of people want to change things, they want to get their board members in so they can have their agenda. I want to be clear that Rockland's agenda is to make sure that the project succeeds. Rockland has fought very hard and put a lot of time into redoing the legislation, the recent zoning, because we want to see the project succeed. Right now, we have, there's a nine-member board over there. Currently, there's one position that's unfilled, that's the joint pick. Rockland has two picks, Waymouth has two picks, Abington has one, the Labor Council has one. The Social Chamber has a pick, we have a joint pick, and the Homeowners Association have a pick. So, currently, although business has not been restricted or stopped, there's been some issues over there recently where there's been some tie votes. So, we need to make sure that there's another member in place. I know you folks don't have their resumes in front of you because they came late. And when I had spoke to Alan this afternoon, he didn't get a chance to get them in because he didn't get them, and he was busy in the office today. So, the idea of people serving on a board is really, their interest should be to make sure that they, they bring the business of the board forward, not prohibit it, not try to change what it's trying to do. I know currently, the homeowners over there are from Waymouth. I heard from their counselor tonight, Mr. Mike Smart, oh, sorry, batteries? Oh, sorry. Mike Smart had called me, he said he's getting some feedback from the residents over there that he represents, that they want to see their position filled. It's in the legislation, and I can understand that the people over there want to have representation. I would want representation if I was over there as a resident as well. The concern is, at least from my viewpoint for a board, we want to advocate for someone, and we want to make sure that we interview someone who's going to have our interests at heart, as well as Abington's interests and Waymouth's interests over there. It's a joint pick between Waymouth and Rockland. But the project is in Rockland, Abington, and Waymouth. And regardless of how things are carved off with whatever, commercial or residential, the project still must succeed for all of us to get the benefits of that. So, I know in the past, there's been some issues with board members, or there was some concern over who was going to be appointed, who could be appointed, thought they were going to be appointed, that type of thing. I mean, I'd go as far as even say, take a blind pick. I mean, when I first ran, some people asked me the same questions, and what people fail to realize is that if you ask somebody to do something, sometimes, majority of the times, you'll find out that they had the best interests of that board at heart. And I've been wrestling with this for the past few weeks, trying to determine how best to handle this. We had former board members on the Board of Selectmen who had great ideas, but were ineffective because they didn't know how to communicate with one another, and they didn't know that they had to work together as one. And I don't know specifically, you know, what happened over on the Waymouth side. I know Waymouth had some change in, of some personnel, and I know that might be reflective of the new mayor being elected, and he was looking for people who would have allegiance to him. I can say comfortably and confidently that our two reps, Kelly O'Brien-Mckinnon and Bill Minahan, have been doing a great job for us, and I've actually been able to step back from attending some of those meetings and whatnot, because I, they have my full trust and confidence, because if there's something that's out there, they pick up the phone, they call me. Or if I have a question, I call them and then respond to them. So, I, I can't say enough for that, and that's the type of candidate that we're looking for with our joint pick.
We have to post—
I know.
—to meet the guidelines. The material wasn't here.
No, I understand that.
So, it'll be on the next.
I just wanted to make sure that people understood that, but at the same time, they understand what we're looking for in a candidate.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
So, we have to post. Can we, is it, is it such a rush that we need to do it at a special selectment meeting, or can we wait till the next one?
No, I think you could probably wait till the next one. There's nothing imminent that, as far as I know, that has to be voted on the SRA. They have a meeting on the 23rd of May, I believe. But there's nothing imminent that I'm aware of. I know Abington has their town meeting on June 6th, they're going for some zoning changes. I believe L-Star and the SRA board is very close to an agreement with the new parkway, the phase-two parkway, to get started. And I know that there's been some discussion from L-Star, as well as some people in the legislature, that there's a vacancy, and they like to see it filled because they don't want to send the wrong message to prospective buyers and tenants, that the board is not a full board and not a functioning board. So, I can agree with that.
So, we have all the candidates in front of us for next meeting?
Well, that's what I want to see if we could do. I know Mr. Miller's here tonight.
Okay. So, you had to sit through all that?
I'm, I'm a long-winded person.
No, not that. Not that you had to sit through it, I'm talking about the prior hearing.
But, but it gets, it gets back to another issue that was raised tonight, and, and that's why I started on this road. Mr. Mullen had spoke about, tonight we had people from Leisure Woods Homeowners Association, and then we had people who were being appointed. And Mike wanted to keep that exclusive because he thinks that one job is a role here, and another job over here is a different role, and he doesn't want to see a conflict. And I know that Mr. Miller is part of the Homeowners Association over there, and I don't know if he'd be willing to step down from that if he was appointed or not, because, as Mr. Mullen had pointed out tonight, similar circumstances, different issue? I, I know, but I just, I just wanted to put that out there, because I didn't know if we're going to have another meeting, if in fact, there'd be another candidate proposed. I don't want to preclude anyone from being a candidate, but that was a concern that was addressed tonight. So, I just figured I'd put that out there.
So, and so, if we ask everyone and invite everyone, put it on the agenda and invite them.
We're planning on inviting everyone for the next meeting.
That makes sense to me.
So, we received resumes today, doesn't give me time, your packages are ready on Thursday afternoon, Friday morning at the latest.
Plus, we have to post and all that.
The information's not available, and we got a post, so it wasn't in the posting.
I understand that, and it was under appointments, so I was just taking a little bit of latitude because it's under appointments. And again, I was, just wanted to reiterate that, because I know that was a concern of somebody, okay? That was addressed tonight. And while Kelly's here, if you don't mind, would you give us a quick update, Kelly?
Well, we're excited that this all hits pass in our town meeting, so that we can start to move forward. If you read the Boston Mississauga Journal today too, there was a major new tenant that's coming into Southfield, so we're excited about that. And now, they'll be able to actually, they're working on the water and the sewage, and then starting to bring more tenants and more prospective tenants, and hopefully, people who will build commercial industry within, so it's really doing well. And I did forward an email to everyone too, the Southfield summer piece starts up too, with the food truck, rodeos. Yep, so, and it will, it's going to be along, so we have our next meeting Monday night, the 23rd, to probably discuss more zoning as well, as we move forward and forward to Southfield.
Thank you for that. When I picked up the ledger this weekend, there was a full-page ad from L-Star, thanking everybody who supported the legislation, supported them for the past year, and I think that was a nice gesture, you know, so. And again, I may have went off course a little bit, and I apologize to the public for that, but I wanted, just to make sure that we had a little bit of latitude where we had appointments, and—
And one other thing too, just keep in mind, we just got a $6.2 million grant, just do the second phase of the roadwork, controlling base, so that's exciting too.
So, that's good news. Alan, could you make sure that you have a chance that's, I know last, last time we met, you and Eric had exchanged some emails, addresses, just to make sure that he gets the information on a timely basis, so we can—
But we would, we'll, it's definitely an agenda written for the next time, but we received—
I know open meeting law, and I want to be in violation of open meeting law, and it's under appointments, we haven't taken any action on it, I was just trying to—
Yeah, that wasn't the appointments that were in your books, though, you know, and, and I know some of you pick up your books, you get to review the things that are in there, we talk about all that. So, the information was not available to you over the weekend, so.
Nope, I understand, and again, I just wanted to bring the, balance the board up to task. Okay, moving, sorry about that, Eric.
Item six.
Item six is FEMA reimbursements.
Just to update the board, as you know, we had that huge snowstorm now two winters ago, but due diligence, all the town boards, and a special shout-out, of course, to Eric and Chief Duffy for doing all of their bookkeeping and accounting. You can see that we're receiving $401,713 that will go into our general fund, that'll show up next year as free cash. That's a little different than the actual contract amount received, because there's an $8,000 figure in there for some of the fences that still need to be repaired, and we'll be, we'll be repairing those this year, that money will come out of that immediately, so. We were able to put in for reimbursement, of course, we didn't get everything, but that certainly eats up a large part of what we had. If you remember, we had an almost $1.2 million deficit two years ago for snow and ice, and that's $400,000. Thank you, Chief Duffy, and Town Accountant Eric, as well as all the department heads. We really strive to track every dime and every penny that we can, and what is reimbursable, and we, we have repeated meetings.
You're discussing the FEMA reimbursements at this time?
With the town, yes. Mr. Chairman, through you.
Yep. April, usually what happens in a meeting, you ask to speak, I'm the chair, so you ask for permission to speak, and then you go up to the mic, if we grant it, and then you identify yourself, your name, where you live, and then you can comment. But typically, unless you're on the agenda, or unless there's a discussion about it, it's usually not recognized, but—
To ask a question?
Nope, but I'll allow it this time, so, if you could come up to the mic.
The mic's here because my battery was out.
Okay, that's fine.
Your question was regarding FEMA?
Yes, the town carries FEMA insurance, right? And participates in flood mapping zones, correct?
Yes.
And you all have been doing that with Southfield, or you appointed a—
I guess, what's the question?
The question is, is FEMA involved, or do you have an appointed environmentalist? How is, how are you feeling about the water situation?
FEMA reimbursement is a federal emergency management agency, so when you have a storm and there is a declared disaster zone, as was happened with the storms of February a year ago, this past February, a disaster was declared, recognized by the President of the United States and the FEMA agency. We track all of our costs, they reimburse the municipality for the costs that were incurred as a result of that storm. We have to demonstrate what costs we incurred that were extraordinary as a result of that storm. Something different from FEMA flood maps.
Does the town have an environmentalist that works with, or for the town regarding water issues, soil?
You know, I know you spoke at town meeting and felt you had some issues with your water. You stopped by the office I wasn't in, I called you, you didn't call back, and I invite you again, as I did earlier tonight, stop in the office tomorrow to talk about your particular issue.
Well, yeah, the, the issues are the water mains, and if we participated in—
Yeah, but it's not included in this article.
I'm trying to find out if flood mapping is—
It's not included in this article at all.
FEMA mapping is available, is it a public record of our participation as a Rockland resident? Is that such a—
FEMA maps are available for your view. The issue here about FEMA tonight, it's not about maps, it was about the snowstorm and the reimbursement to the town based on it being declared federal emergency, federal disaster, the storm area, based on how much snow.
Yes, I was affected by that also, well, my house burnt down then.
I, I don't know when your house burnt down, we're just going back by—
February 24th, 2016.
But what happened is, the town filed, the town filed to the snowstorm, we expected—
Storm.
We expected money, and the federal government is giving us money back. That's all that's on the agenda tonight, nothing about the flood zone.
Just about monies that you're receiving, and what you're going to do with it from—
From the federal government.
Money, not what we're doing with it, that, that goes into the general fund, and that'll be on the books for the next town meeting. What this is, the town spent one, we were in a deficit of 1.5 million. The, the federal government declared that that storm was a federal emergency, they reimbursed us some money.
Not even all the cost.
Not even all the good money we spent. And, and Alan is just advising us of that. And what, what unfortunately, because of open meeting laws, we can only take issues that are on the agenda, and that's the only thing that was on the agenda, not flood map zones. I understand what you're talking—
Apologize for my lack of understanding.
No, no, I know, and that's why we're being a little—
I'm dealing with water, and—
No, the, tonight's meeting has nothing to do with water, April, but you can go online and look up FEMA flood maps on the internet, it's a very easy process to check. And there's also flood maps kept down at the Building Commissioner's office downstairs, so.
As far as, as true for people at FEMA, you can contact, I know I've spoken to them.
Yeah, because they have certifications that are not in that kind of a zone.
You can read the map, and it's up to your, your insurance company—
It's stated that the town participated in that, so when I saw the town participated in, in that, by, you know, FEMA, that was on the document, so—
It's a little bit different, though, for what this was.
Sorry, I misinterpreted it.
No, because what happened was, the federal government, they had redrawn the flood maps, the coastal flood maps, which redefined some areas. So, there's been a lot of debate in other communities over that, mainly coastal communities that were affected by the ocean, the tide coming in, that type of stuff. So, I know it's affected a lot of people, because when they redrew the maps, it increased the insurance cost to those homeowners.
I'm sure it did to those homeowners.
So, there's been a lot of discussion about it in other towns.
What I was here to discuss about the coastal conditions, I don't—
No, but that's what the FEMA maps, when they redrawn, that's what a majority of it came from, because what happened was, the insurance companies had huge losses prior years, so they petitioned to have the maps redrawn. And when they got them redrawn, it, it was to their, well, in some cases, to clarify what areas were more prone to floods or not. I know myself, personally, I own a piece of property that's on a lake, but we're in a 100-year flood zone, so in order to insure the property, I need to purchase flood insurance in order to insure myself against a loss. If I chose not to purchase a—
Doesn't have anything to do with us receiving reimbursements for not having water issues of flooding?
No, it has nothing to do with that, it's, it's simply one's the, one's the—
That's what, that's what the insurance carrier carries, and that we're, we don't— And that we don't sit in a low-line water.
But getting back to your issue we talked about the other night, Commissioner Allen, he's aware of it, he's contacted the people, he can give you an update, and he can take care of that this week in his office with you, okay?
Yeah, I'm trying to reach the different departments, but I've been unable to apply your advisement. It's a difficult process.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Alan. Next up, item number seven.
Surplus vehicle declarations, Mr. Chairman. You have a request from David Taylor to declare surplus for an F-350 pickup. He has a VIN number listed, it's a 2008. He wants to use that in trade towards the new truck that was approved at town meeting in Article 52, and we need your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
To vote. Okay, next up on the agenda?
Stay right there. We have a second item in here.
Missed it, sorry, Scott.
It's okay.
The fire chief would like you to declare a 1988 GMC fire engine, the VIN number attached, the surplus. I don't know, were you going to use that in trade, chief?
No, so this was the engine that's being replaced by the engine we bought with funds from special town meeting from Hanover.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor? It's a vote.
Thank you very much. Usually, we do that a little later.
Only a few years old, huh?
Yeah.
What do you do with it now? Sell it?
Okay, under new business, oh, sorry, Corey.
I have to advertise surplus equipment unless we designate it for trade. We advertise it, we accept bids. If we don't think that the bids are worthwhile, then we can deny that trade and work out the best deal in the best interest of the town. As has happened on a few occasions, when we've advertised like 11 vehicles, every once in a while, you'll get somebody who wants to come in, bid $25, thinking they can now take it to the junkyard and get $200 for it. We're not that dumb. We can take it to the junkyard ourselves and get $200 for it. So, we look at it and try and get a fair market value, even for scrap metal.
Perfect.
Okay, item, new business, item number eight, relocation of polls, National Grid. Mr. Chalka?
In front of you is a request from National Grid to relocate some polls on Hingham Street, and it just requires a petition and vote of the board. I have checked with fire, police, and highway. They have all given the okay to approve that. The, in the back, the clerk of the selectmen, who also serves as vice chairman of the board of selectmen, would have to sign the document in order for them to move the polls on Hingham Street, but it requires a vote of the board to approve the relocation.
Any discussion, or do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor? It's a vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And there's finally, under Article...
Number nine?
Article nine is a, it's going to come into that time of the year where we're going to be doing a number of transfers. I have it in my book. I thought Eric withdrew it. What do you have in your book?
I don't have it.
I don't have it.
Eric withdrew it from your books and not mine, so we will go past that for the moment. I apologize. He did get to your books.
There's always next meeting.
Not mine. I remember him saying we had to pull that out. The fire chief is here, and as you know, at town meeting, we passed an article regarding studying building a new fire station. He would like, he has a request before you to establish a fire station building committee. He knows we disbanded one a year or so ago, and he would just like to make this all call while the board... Typically, we can't make any appointments tonight, obviously, but if anyone would be interested in serving that committee, if you have anyone you would like us to approach or recruit, or any ideas you have for who would serve that committee, but he would like to ask this board to authorize the establishment of a fire station building committee, and we will make appointments at the next meeting, maybe.
There was actually a fire station, substation committee is what it was. So, I was actually on that.
No wonder we took it, so we're looking at the station instead.
How many people?
Well, we can make that determination. I'm not sure, I'm talking with the chief, so...
Motion.
Second.
We need a big vote.
Five, seven, such a great, you can see who wants them, who wants the volunteers.
And if we can advertise that?
We will do. It'll be up on the website.
Okay.
And I know everybody, after that enthralling rent control discussion, have not touched their dial, and they're still watching.
Well, rent control, unfortunately, is one of those issues, you know?
I don't want to get started again on rent control. Now, we also have...
Where's the shut-off switch? Someday, we'll all be there.
On May 28th, the, from Tony Materna, the, anyone interested in placing the flags at the cemetery at VFW Hall should meet at the VFW Hall noon time, May 28th. On May 30th, there will be a short service at St. Patrick Cemetery at 8:00, and the Memorial Day Parade will step off at 10:00 a.m. at Summit Street. They, of course, encourage the board of selectmen to participate, if you would be so kind. Reminder, it's starting to get down to your last chance to get rid of those old shoes that are kicking around at the bottom of your closet. We have boxes here, and it helps the Memorial Park Elementary Pack, if anyone wants to bring them along. Reminder about town hall hours, again, we are open on the first and third Tuesdays. We have people, including us, April, at the tax collector's office tonight. We are open, town offices are open, you can come, go to the building committee, for example, and look at floodplain maps. We are open on the first and third Tuesdays of the month. We will be closed Fridays in the summer, July and August. I believe it's actually to September 2nd. And one last thing I would like to say, thank Pat Foley and her daughter, Maura. You might have noticed some flowers have finally been planted in those planters around the center of town, as we try and do our bit, and they took on the task, volunteered, and went out on their own time to place those flowers in the pots around town. Hopefully, they'll grow, flourish, and make downtown Rockland more beautiful. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by the individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of all of the board of selectmen, and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. With that, we have Mr. Mullen.
I just have one other thing. I haven't been home yet, but I've heard, there's a notice that everyone as well, town, has been receiving regarding the new trash price, effective, I believe, July 1st of this year, and I know the board of health has been engaged in, you know, a number of conversations and work around, you know, trash throughout the town as of July 1 of this year, in terms of, you know, new barrels potentially and everything else, and I was just wondering to, I hope, help them and help the town understand exactly what this means, how residents can prepare for everything. If we can invite them, maybe, I'll, Mr. Town Minister, to the next meeting. I'm Mr. Chairman, and...
I think it's a great idea.
Just to get the word out, so people are up to speed.
We can invite the board of health... I can tell you, Mr. Mullen, they're looking at a $6 per quarter increase in trash. They're going to move to that automatic pickup, so it's $6 a quarter. There has not been, apparently, a rate increase in your trash pickup, I'm told, for 10 years, and I will make sure someone is here at our next meeting to talk about the change.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Welch?
I just want to say, I attended the event on Saturday, and I want to commend everybody that did a good job. It was the bicycle helmet?
Kiwanis.
Yeah, Kiwanis, yeah. It was really a good time. I went with my son, Brody, had a blast. He was double-fisting lollipops and stuffing his face full of pizza, got a little ID card. It was a good time. The kids could do a bunch of bicycle safety tests. We, you know, get a little certificate. We, it was just a very well-held event, well-attended. Just want to commend everybody for a good job on that. And also, to Southfield this summer, I advise everyone to go check it out, attend the rodeo, food truck events. They're a really good time. Bring your kids, it's good, get to sample a bunch of different food. And other than that, that's it.
Is there a date?
They'll announce them. Southfield will announce them.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thanks. That rodeo, the bicycle rodeo, it's funny, when your kids get older, you don't notice those things, but I do know that the park department, I know at least one employee volunteered their time to map out, it was like a course?
It was a course, yeah.
Yeah, he mapped it out and did all of it, and I, being a comment, well, that's good overtime, and he said, I, you know, I went up there and volunteered my time to do what I want to give back to. So, I mean, there's good things being done by town employees all the time, and that's one I'd like to recognize. And the other thing, I went to the rail trail cleanup a few weeks ago, and, you know, I got to admit, part of my motivation was to make sure my high school student gets some community service, but I got to tell you, it was really a good event. The Open Space Committee was out there in full force. Alan Cron, the current principal, future superintendent, organized a bunch of students and brought donuts, and, you know, we ended up getting stuck with that part that everyone talks about, the part from Union Street down to Howard Street, and it was a mess. I mean, everything you can think of, we picked up, and it's, luckily, we had gloves on some of them, and I got to say that it's been maintained. I've been up there now, I walked down there with my wife, and I was surprised to see that it's still in the state, it's still in a clean state. Some sections is bottles, but, I mean, the nips, my God. I mean, there are nips everywhere on that rail trail. It's amazing, I, you know, it was everything that you can imagine. You name something, it was there. And, but the crew that was out there did a really good job cleaning up, and it was a well-attended event, and I think it's something that everyone should try to get out and do. And also, you earn, if you're at your high school, you earn the required community service. That's all I have.
Mr. Ryan?
Well, you guys ate up everything I was going to say, so...
Yeah, you were there.
I was there with the, both the bicycle rodeo, which was, again, very well-organized, with volunteers everywhere. I was there first thing in the morning, and they were worried they weren't going to get enough bikes to go, with the amount of volunteers we had, but they got around 100 people to come out, I think, over the course of the day, and it was a very good event. The rail trail, you know, we hear a lot about that, and I picked up broken bottles, all sorts of rubbish. It's a sin to see it out there like that, but we got a good bunch of people in the Open Space Committee. I know sometimes we don't give, we butt heads them a little over what's what, but, you know, they do a good job getting out there and taking care of, cleaning up the rail trail. The only other thing I want to say is that the Kiwanis slash Park Department Youth Commission Eagles Bite Me Bait Coffee and Derby is on July, on June 4th, Saturday. Up at Rain or Shine, up at the Harbor Masters Lair on Reed's Pond, and so, bring the kids out there, we'll have plenty of bait and things, I mean, bring your own rods, your own fishing gear. We have a few extra things, and we give out prizes to the top five winners in each division. One is kindergarten through second grade, third and fourth graders and fifth and sixth graders, so you have to be in sixth grade or less, and be in school, kindergarten, in order to participate. It's always a good event, and, do you want me to say anything? Looking forward to a good time this year. I'd be, I missed to say, my grandson, Zach, says he's coming back to Three Pete. So, the kids have a good time, and there's nothing more precious than one of these five-year-old kids who comes up there with his first fish on the fishing pole with a smile on their face, so come on down, enjoy the day. You get plenty of food and whatever. Good take. So, I ate at noon time. That's all I have to say.
Any rain day?
No rain dates. We're Rain or Shine, fishermen in Rain or Shine. We've been there, no, we've been there in the morning when it's rained, and people do come out, and they take the time, and it's, you know, it's part of life being a fisherman. If you're going to be a fisherman, you deal with the rain. That's all I got.
Okay, well, I'll make it short and sweet. I know it was a little bit drawn out with rent control, but it was encouraging to actually see, as Mr. Mullen said, that he actually had two candidates running for a volunteer position. Now, if we can get maybe some of those people to go up for some of the other committees in town, that would be something worthwhile. Sometimes things don't go the way you always want them to go, but I think the rent control has demonstrated tonight has been an effective tool for the residents in those parks, whether you like or dislike the appointee there, or want to change, the appointee's done a good job for the town, and they've done a good job for the rent control in general, so that's why she was reappointed tonight, and I think that was good for the town to continue with rent control and the course and so on. There's been a lot of discussion around town about the upcoming projects we have, our roads project, our fields project. Again, they made it through town meeting, they're on the ballot, as announced tonight. Come out and support, come out and support them for the town. Remember, that's June 11th, so put it on your calendar to come out and vote if you can't be here to vote. Town clerk does have absentee ballots, so keep that in mind. As far as open space, as Mr. Ryan alluded to, they're very passionate people, I'll say that. We had some lengthy discussions, some lengthy negotiations with the Southfield zoning, and I must say, it was a pleasure actually working with them and everybody coming together in the end, because although they're more concerned with open space, they still went and did what was right for the town and good for the project, so I applaud them for that, and I applaud the fact that they're passionate about some of the great things we have in town, whether that's cleaning the rail trail up, or the forest, and the other space that we have. And it's nice to hear, and it's encouraging to hear, that our town employees do volunteer for things in town. It's a good thing to hear that, that they give back, and that we have good employees, and we have good people living in town. That's what makes Rockland great, so I want to say thank you to those people, and thank you for everyone who helped support this board and the other boards and committees in town. So, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you, and have a good night.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yep, yep, yep. Thank you.